Welcome to the meeting of the Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Gray is going to lead us in our pledge.
Ready, we did. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning to everyone. This is the time that we set aside in our meetings for oral communications. We have 15 minutes for that. The public may speak on any item not on the printed agenda. No action may be taken by the board. And I'm going to limit public comment to three minutes today per person. So please help us with that and get to the point and we'll move on. So, any public comment this morning?
Good morning, Terri Cox, Cox Consulting. So mine will be a lot less than three minutes. I'm inviting the community to the two public meetings for the proposed Resiliency Centers. So we have one proposed in Tuolumne, one in Groveland. And we will have meetings in the next week for those. One in Tuolumne is going to be this Thursday, two days from now, 5:30 to 7:30 at the board chambers here. And then the one in Groveland will be this coming Wednesday, the 27th, at Groveland Community Hall, 6 to 8 o'clock. So what we will be going over at these meetings is the findings of the programming document and the goals for the community resiliency centers. We're going to review the site and floor plans that we put together in the schematic design. We're going to go over the partnership programs and services that we've been working on with our community partners. We will be discussing the findings of the environmental documents and asking for public comment on those. And then we're going to outline the next steps in the process. Now, I would like to encourage anybody who is interested in these centers to be at the meeting. We do expect some members of the core team to be there. Now, these are the Governor's Office, Cal EPA, Cal Fire, Forest Service, Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and State Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, they are not completely sold on two centers. So having a good turnout at both places shows that these centers will be supported. If they don't think that's going to be the case, then they will only let us have one. So good turnout is important. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one comment. I think it'd be a good idea to resend out the flyer of invitations to all of the groups if we could.
I think that's already happening, plus the flyer is posted on the county's website.
All right, thank you. Okay.
This is Peterson County Administrator's Office. I would like to request your board add an additional item to the agenda this morning to 13A on the consent calendar. This is an item for a coalition of folks who are interested or who are asking the governor to delay a decision about the waters of the state. This is a process that's been going on for a long time. The issue is that there is, they plan to issue the final decision on March 22nd. And then there's public com, I'm sorry, the final procedures on March 22nd with a decision on April 2nd. And so the coalition of folks has reached out to your board and has asked you to sign on asking for a delay, saying that there's a conflict between the definition of wetlands, between the state and the federal government, and that there's not a significant, or not a substantial enough amount of time for public comment. So I'm asking your board to add that to the consent calendar, 13A.
Okay. Anyone have, any board member have in opposition to adding the item on the consent calendar? Move the item to the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Public comment on the motion. Okay, bring it back. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you very much. And just a comment, we did not get this information until Friday afternoon.
Thank you, yes.
Reason for the urgent action. Thank you.
Right, and I just want to make it clear that in the future, we make sure that we specifically state that it arose subsequent to the posting of the agenda.
I apologize.
Right, that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, perfect.
So, next item on public comment.
Good morning, Chairman, referred members of the board. My name is Kelly Schroeder. I'm the Animal Control Director here in Tuolumne County. And I would like to tell the board about a new program my veterinary technician Christina Whitcomb has developed. She has instituted a dog and cat food, pet food bank. Our first food bank day will be tomorrow from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at the Jamestown Shelter. She has also developed a flyer for pet food donations. And Tractor Supply has already donated pallet of pet food. She has posted the information on the Tuolumne County Animal Control Facebook page where she will also post further events. Her, one of her goals is to have pet food at all of the food banks in Tuolumne County for people to pick up for their pets as they pick up food for themselves. I have placed, I've emailed all of you flyers and I've placed them in the back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank her for, or him for doing that, sir.
Good morning, Council. Once again, my name is Jeff Musio. I own Easy Bulldog Farms in Sonora. Just wanted to come in and once again and ask for cannabis to be put on the agenda. I'd like to start the commercial cannabis talks again, please. On top of that, I can give you a reason this time. One of the many reasons why it's easy for a dispensary to also have a farm is because then you can lower your prices and the people in the community benefit. I'm sure you guys are aware that you used to be able to grow a lot more in this county. You guys reduced everything, looked down considerably on people. So a lot of people are having to come into my shop and shop there, and, which is very fortunate that the city of Sonora is capacity like that, excuse me, and allowing that. But the problem is the price is still a little bit high. And it does help a lot if I have a farm in order to go with it. So one of the many reasons besides having an industry that could help with many of the financial problems you guys are having, but also it helps lower the cost for the people that are actually in need of that medicine that are hurting from your current policies. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
All right, Naya Kirk, District Supervisor. Jen Pastroni, hopefully I'm not butchering her name. She couldn't be here today, but she did want me to hand this out to the board about the waste management issue that she's been dealing with the last month. So I told her I'd hand this out to you guys.
It's actually on the agenda, so we can address it if that comes up.
Right. Just, she requested, so I said I would.
Okay, so you can do that.
At that time.
Get to the agenda. Yep, thanks.
And then, just, you know, I wanted to just let you guys know, let the public know. I'll make this as quick as possible. Thursday, I got word that my cousin Kalen had overdosed and passed away from heroin. 27 years old, you know, speaking with my aunt and back in December, he was going through some pictures with his aunt. And he showed her a picture when he was 15 and when he was 17, or 14 and 16. And he said, hey, look, mom, or aunt, this is me before I started using marijuana, and this is me after I started using marijuana. He ended up getting laced, hooked on other drugs, ended up using, ended up using heroin and now he's gone. So, I don't care about money. I don't care about how much money we can make off this product. I have right here a, this is a Colorado study. And it shows that since they legalized marijuana and since they've had it more accessible to their population, the opioid death toll has increased as well. So, you know, the state's funny, they want to fight opioids, but yet they're opening up the door that leads to it. So this is information I want to share with the board and hope you consider it.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, I'm going to close the public comment period. And would the clerk of the board please read the consent calendar?
Minutes of the meeting held March 5th, 2019, finding that Assembly ordinance number 3352 was published. Adopting a resolution approving the road names within the proposed Tuolumne Vista subdivision project. Adoption of the Columbia Airport and Pine Mountain Lake Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program, Designating Civil Engineer as EOA's Own Officer for Tuolumne County Community Resources Agency Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. Adopting a resolution declaring 0.404 acre parcel of common land one block north of the state, Highway 120, Groinda Surplus. Adopting a resolution declaring Old Cavalier Road, 827 parcel of land at surplus. Adopting a resolution declaring Northwest Avenue, 0.47 acre parcel at surplus. Approving a no sub completion for the Tuolumne County Bridge Preventive Maintenance Project. Adopting a resolution approving the 2019 update to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Approving revised class specifications for juvenile correctional officers 1, 2, and senior. Authorizing Tuolumne County Fire Department to apply for staffing and for added fire and emergency response, volunteer firefighter equipment, and retention grant. And enter to a memorandum of understanding for several county fire departments for the recruit and retention of volunteer firefighters throughout the county. Accepting the resignation of Tara Docstader from the Tuolumne County Housing Home Review Committee and directing court post to University of Kansas City. Approving the reappointment of Bill Edwards and appointment of Neil So to the County Commission on Aging and approving correspondence to Governor Newsom regarding the State Water Resource Control Board proposed waters of the state policy. Authorizing the chair's signature to be added to the coalition.
Okay, Supervisor Gray has asked me to pull item number four. And I am going to pull item number 13A. Do we, any other supervisors request to pull anything? Okay, public comment on the consent calendar, absent four and 13A. Okay, bring it back to the board for the motion on the consent calendar.
No consent.
Second. Okay, I got a motion by Supervisor Penning, second by Supervisor Gray. On the consent calendar, all on paper, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Would the clerk of the board please read, or re-read item number four?
This is consideration of adopting the Columbia Airport and Pine Mountain Lake Airport Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program at all.
Good morning, Lieutenant Stute, from the Air Force Manager of the County. You have this item before you. It is for the adoption of Tuolumne County's disadvantaged enterprise program plan for 2019, 2020, and 2021. This is a plan that has been approved before. It's an FAA required document for the airport to have in order to remain eligible for grant funds for the next three years, repeats every three years. This plan outlines a total of $8.1 million worth of projects to be obtained in the next three years. It is separated out in between planning and engineering contracts as well as construction contracts, with a D V equal of 1% for engineering and planning contracts and 4% for construction contracts. If you have any questions, I will.
Well, I, I just think that these items are really important for the public to hear that how much work goes in into these projects to get them brought forward. So, I want to commend all that was involved in this to bring this forward. And, after public comment, that we have to make a motion to approve this. Okay, open up the public comment. Okay, bring it back. Any board comment or any, okay Supervisor Gray? Chairman, let me approve item number four, said calendar. Second. Okay, I've got the motion by Supervisor Gray, a second by Supervisor Campbell. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, five oh. Would you clerk of the board please reread item 13A?
This is consideration of approving correspondence to Governor Newsom regarding the State Water Resource Control Board proposed waters of the state.
Okay, I just asked to pull this because I want to make a comment. I'll make my comments, open it up to the board, and then I'll ask for public comment. Your county worked very hard with several of our associations, most notably NACO, to stop the Waters of the U.S. and get it rewritten. We succeeded in that, although the new Waters of the U.S. is not everything we wanted. It is far and away an improvement over the original Waters of the U.S. rule. Subsequent to getting the new Waters of the U.S. revised, the state of California decided that they liked the Waters of the U.S. so much that they created the Waters of the State and rewrote all the stuff that we opposed into the Waters of the State. This policy, state policy, will have an extremely deleterious and damaging effect to agriculture and rural communities throughout the state. The opposition to it is about one short of unanimous. Apparently, the governor is the only dissenting opinion. Virtually every water and irrigation district in the state, every rural county that I know of is opposed to this. So that is why we're signing onto this. I just wanted our public to know that.
Yeah, and I would add that last Wednesday, we had this emergency conversation at the RCRC meeting. And there are some 22 signatories. And that really illustrates how opposed this is across, Supervisor Rutherford said, we have rural counties, we have water associations, even the South Lake Public Utilities District is on board. And, you know, not one that typically signs on to some of these issues. So just would really encourage us to be as strong and loud as we can as a conversation.
Supervisor, Supervisor Gray? Yes, you know, it's, this doesn't just affect agriculture, but it affects every type of construction that we, we want to do, roads, houses, subdivision. It puts total control of those waterways under, under the state. And in most cases, they don't even understand where the water comes from. So, I certainly support this. Yeah, ditches, culverts, ephemeral ponds, ever, anything. If you have a puddle in your backyard once a year, literally, that's how ridiculous this thing is. Any, any other supervisor for comment, public comment? Okay, bring it back for a motion?
Move on, Steph recommendation.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, five oh. Would the clerk of the board please read item number 14?
This is a presentation of the County Service Award for Phil Hagnack from the Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff Pooley.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Chairman Rutherford. And it's pronounced Hallowcak. So I'm here today to present Deputy Phil Hallowcak with his 20-year service award. So Phil, you mind coming up?
Phil looks so, no, it's okay, dude.
So I do have a few comments about Phil. Phil was hired in 1999 as a deputy sheriff recruit. He's been an arson investigator, a corporal, since 2007. He was then a detective in 2014, and most recently in 2018, a boat patrol officer. He's trained a ton of people that have come through our office. He's a unique individual. When I asked your coworkers, tell me about Phil, these are the things that they said about you. So, Phil's a dependable, dedicated deputy who never says no, who is constantly smiling, except for today. And solid as a rock. But the one comment that I really loved was, and I'm going to quote this, "Man, he is fun to work with." And that says a lot about you, Phil. I want to thank you for your service in this community. 20 years unto itself is amazing. You should be proud of that, and I hope you have many more years with us. So, I have a plaque for you. This is County of Tuolumne, in appreciation for 20 years of service to Deputy Phil Hallowcak. And it's a great picture of our sheriff's office, probably in the 60s or so. Congratulations on your 20 years. Thank you.
I'll just make one comment. Doing anything for that number of years is, is an incredible accomplishment. And doing it extremely well is even greater. And thank you very much for your service to the Sheriff's Department. And I'd like to thank, since we've got a few of them here, I'd like to thank our Sheriff's Department. I really believe that we've got the best Sheriff's Department in the state of California. Maybe in the United States, I'm not sure. I don't travel to that many other counties. But again, thank you for your service and all of you, all of you in the Sheriff's Department. Thank you all. Would the clerk of the board please read item number 15?
Consideration of approving this to give the recognition for Sergeant Mark Kurzic upon his retirement.
You're taking over my meeting, Sheriff.
I think there's only one more after this. So, we are here today to recognize Mark Kurzic on his retirement. Mark's been with our office for 23 years and has done 29 years in law enforcement. Mark, would you come up? So in, this little story about Mark. In 2013, the sheriff immediately asked me to come up and be his undersheriff. I did my due diligence. I went around and I checked on how are things going up in Tuolumne County? How's the board doing? How's the office doing? And Mark is one of the people I met with originally. Hadn't met Mark at that time. I actually knew his wife from sometime prior. And the first impression I got from Mark was he's smart, intelligent, very quick-witted, dry sense of humor, which I appreciate. And above all, I think he really showed that he loved this office and the people that he works with. And I think that he really cared and wanted to make a difference in the sheriff's office. Having said that, since 2002, when Mark was promoted to corporal, he's had a leadership role in our office. And in doing so, I think he's probably trained almost everybody that's currently working in our office. He's mentored them. He, he has put his handprint on our office for the foreseeable future. And to me, that is an outstanding career. Personally, Mark, I want to thank you, I want to thank you for making me a better undersheriff, sheriff. You've kept me in line and kept me in check on a number of occasions. And I want to wish you absolutely the best in your endeavors. And thank you so much for your service to this county.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, hang on, Mark.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this certificate, and then we're gonna vote on it.
And I'll be down to say his few words. Certificate of recognition, Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors commending Mark Kurzic. This Board of Supervisors recognizes Sergeant Mark Kurzic for his service to the citizens of Tuolumne County. Sergeant Kurzic began his career with the Tuolumne County Sheriff's Office in 1996. Mark started with the TCSO as a jail deputy sheriff. In 1997, Mark was promoted to deputy sheriff. He became the range safety officer in 1999 and was promoted to corporal in 2002. In 2004, Mark joined the SWAT team and was promoted to sergeant in 2013. During his time with the TCSO, Mark has worn many hats, from court security, field training, along with being a multi-term Deputy Sheriff's Association president. Prior to working for TCSO, Sergeant Kurzic was a correctional officer for Santa Clara County Department of Corrections, where he worked for six years before attending First Academy. Sergeant Kurzic has been in law enforcement for an impressive 29 years. Sergeant Kurzic has been a cornerstone in the sheriff's office. His 23-year tenure is a testament to his passion for his job, a job that he has consistently done well. We are sorry to see Sergeant Kurzic go, but wish him the very best in his retirement. Now, the Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors does hereby join the Tuolumne County Sheriff's Office in extending its heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Sergeant Kurzic for his 23 years of dedicated service to the residents of Tuolumne County. On the occasion of his retirement on March 23rd, 2019, and wishes him good fortune in all of his future endeavors, dated March 19th, 2019. Do I have any public comment on this? Okay, bring it back to the board. Mr. Sheriff, will they approve the certificate of recognition?
Second.
Any comments from the board?
I have a comment. I just want to echo what the sheriff's sentiments were in the last item. I would put this sheriff's office up against any in the state of California. And that's a tribute to all of you that served, and it's a tribute to the leadership. And Tuolumne County is a better place because you have been with us for the past 23 years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to say you look like you age well. Hopefully, I'll be, pardon that. Okay, do I have a motion already? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, it's five oh.
All right, we're gonna do this. First off, I want to thank the board this morning, taking time out of your schedule, sets aside. Sheriff Pooley for making this happen. You know, 29 years is a good run. There's been many ups and downs in a career, but I have no regrets about choosing this profession or choosing the Tuolumne County Sheriff's Office as my career agency. I want to thank each of you for your support, your camaraderie, your friendship. There's truly no better group of persons anywhere in any agency. I made it safely through my career because you all have my back. No pun intended. All right, a little bit. You know, we look out for each other as brothers and sisters in the law enforcement community and the law enforcement family. And I could not have had such an amazing career without you, my sheriff's office family. Not to mention many friendships I've had within other partnering agencies. I lead with tremendous respect and appreciation for what you do and who you are. I've been blessed. There's one thing I'm going to take away from this moment. Is though I'm closing this chapter, doesn't mean I'm not going to remember the book and all the characters in my story. Lord knows there's been a lot of characters over the years. I'm gonna keep those memories with me. My wife, Shawna, I'll make one promise to you. I'll try not to let the old man in. Thank you all for coming out today. Appreciate it.
Love you, buddy.
Those are always special moments. Got another special moment. Would the clerk of the board please read item number 16?
This is consideration of adopting a resolution proclaiming March 29th, 2019 as welcome in all of the Vietnam Veterans Day in Tuolumne County.
Okay, yeah.
Good morning. I'm Debaskew, and I am the Tuolumne County Veteran Service Officer. And it's my privilege to present this resolution. As you all know, the Vietnam War has been called the Second Indonesia War. And it ran from November 55 to April 75. So I'm not going to read all of this because I know... So, I'm not gonna read all of this because I know Carl's gonna read the rest, the entire resolution, but it ran 19 years and for five sitting presidents. As you also well know, that March is the National Women's History Month. So, I want to plug one thing for, the first woman killed in Vietnam was First Lieutenant Sharon Lane, and that was in '69. She was a nurse. And the second woman that still is unaccountable for, and the only woman unaccounted for, is a missionary and physician, Eleanor Vete, and she was captured in '69. Being a woman vet, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So, it is my honor to present this. And the Tuolumne County Supervisors has supported this resolution since 2015, and we hope that you continue to do this for our 1,700 Vietnam vets in this county to support March 29th as Welcome Home Vietnam Day. And we have some tickets for the dinner and the announcement for the celebration. So, if you want tickets back in the back, I'll leave it through. So, talk to them. I'm not sure what the tickets cost.
She's gonna tell us.
Yes, she is.
And she's gonna tell us where and where and all of that.
Okay. Well, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. The event is being held Friday, March 29th. It's a black oak casino resort in the Four Winds Ballroom. Doors open at 5:30. It starts at 6:00 and runs till 8:00. The tickets are $20 a person. That also gets you in for a chance of a door prize of a 55-inch flat-screen TV. Our comedian is gonna be Stephen B. He is funny. We've had him for the last three years, and he's a cling comedian. There will also be silent auction, or derps are sponsored by Seven Sisters, and there's a no-host bar. And of course, I'm the one that's got the tickets. They put me in charge of things. So, if you would like some today, I brought plenty. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Things are a little bit out of order this morning. I'm Larry Bradlitt. I'm president of Chapter 391. And specifically stepping up this morning, we have new supervisors. I just wanted to say glad to see you here. And I'm not real sure if you know completely about what the chapter is all about in the Tuolumne County area, Calvarus, Navarre. We've been all over. We're in paradise right now, working with some people up there. So, first of all, we have over 30 years of history within Sonora, doing basically raising funds. We raise funds for veteran outreach, scholarships, and just community outreach in general. We are very active on veterans' issues, as the board has in occasion come to our notice, and we have showed up to talk and try and straighten things out we didn't agree with. We hope we never see any of that again. We know that the board has supported us over the years many, many times, and we appreciate that. I would like to ask my officers that are in the back of the room to please stand up. We come here every year, and it looks like there is a minor number of us here, but that's not really true. There's 560-something members within the chapter here in Tuolumne County, and they cover all over the state. We are the largest chapter in the state of California and ninth in the nation. And so, the influence that we have is not only local, but it's statewide, and it is national. Several of the officers back here are national and southern state. So, we spread out all over the place. And I thank you for the resolution. We appreciate it every year. Don't know how many more years we're gonna do this, but we appreciate it every time we do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution. Any other public comment before I do that? I'll read the resolution, and we're gonna vote on it. But first of all, I'd like every Vietnam veteran to please stand and remain standing while I read the resolution. Whereas, the Vietnam War was fought in Vietnam from 1961 to 1975, and involved North Vietnam and the Vietcong in conflict with the United States Armed Forces and South Vietnam. And whereas, the United States became involved in Vietnam because policymakers in the United States believed that if South Vietnam fell to a communist government, then communism would spread throughout the rest of Southeast Asia. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces began serving in an advisory role to the South Vietnam Vietnamese in 1961. And whereas, as a result of the Gulf of Tonkin Incident in August 2nd, 1964, and August 4th, 1964, Congress overwhelmingly passed the Gulf of Tonkin Resolution on August 7th, 1964, which effectively handed over war-making powers to President Johnson until such time as peace and security had returned to Vietnam. And whereas, in 1965, the United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam. And whereas, by the end of 1965, there were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 543 troops was reached. And whereas, on January 27th, 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of all United States prisoners of war held in North Vietnam and the withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. And whereas, on March 30th, 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal of combat troops from Vietnam. And whereas, more than 58,000 members of the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members of the Armed Forces were wounded. And whereas, in 1982, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial was dedicated in the District of Columbia to commemorate those members of the United States Armed Forces who died or were declared missing in action in Vietnam. And whereas, the Vietnam War was an extremely divisive issue among the people of the United States. And whereas, members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War were caught upon their return in home in the crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in the Vietnam War. And whereas, the establishment of a Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day would be an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Tuolumne does hereby recognize March 29th, 2019, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day as proclaimed by the President of the United States and the United States Congress. This Board of Supervisors further honors and recognizes the contributions of veterans of the Armed Forces who served in Vietnam, adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Tuolumne on today. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion?
Sheriff, I would approve the resolution.
Mr. Sheriff, I would approve the resolution. Second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Supervisor Gray, a second from Supervisor Brennan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? It passes. 5-0. Thank you very much, and thank you Vietnam vets. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I have to be out of town that day, and I won't be able to make the event, but I know it'll be a great one, and I encourage everybody that possibly can to go out and support our Vietnam vets. Thank you very much. Okay, would you collect the board, please, read item number 17.
Consideration of reviewing emergency action regarding the culvert caused on Quinale Road and North of Bellevue Elementary School, and determining whether or not there is a need to continue the action.
Good morning, board. I'm Rossing Scott-High, Associate Engineer with Community Resources Agency. During the storms of February 25th, the culvert on Quinale Mill Road, the first street crossing north of Bellevue Road and Nudger School, was overwhelmed, and a portion of the roadway was eroded, and currently threatens the road integrity and safety of traffic utilized in Quinale Mill. Quinale Mill Road is a designated minor collector and serves as the only county-maintained route available to approximately 1,100 residents. On March 5th, in accordance with Public Contract Code, your Board of delegating the authority to the Community Resources Agency Director to order any necessary action to repair or replace a public facility, take any directly related and immediate action required by that emergency, and procure the necessary equipment, services, and supplies for those purposes without giving notice for goods to let to contract. Five contractors who expressed an interest in performing emergency work for the county were invited to submit proposals to replace the damaged culvert and roadway. A job walk was held on Thursday, March 7th, and proposals were due on Tuesday, March 12th. Four proposals were received and evaluated by the Community Resources Agency Director and engineering staff based on the best approach, value, and timeframe to complete the work for the county. Narich and Sons Inc., of Sanora, California, was chosen to complete the emergency repairs. Narich's proposed fix includes replacing the existing culvert, reconstructing the roadway, raising the roadway profile, and armory installed to the proximal protection, and is estimated to cost $535,000. The county will execute a time and materials contract in accordance with Caltrans Force Account provisions. Work began this morning at 7:00 a.m. and is expected to take approximately 28 working days. They're planning on working Monday through Saturday, and we are looking at a maximum of 20-minute delays for traffic, pushing one lane open with fliers at all times. We have sent a press release out to the community, Cedar Ridge Fire Department, Old Oak Ranch, Bellevue School, and we're trying to get an information page up on the website so people can check for updates on the project. Given the emergency nature of this project, see after the western board continued the emergency actions, we'll allow the CRA Director to address any unexpected issues that may arise during construction. As required by Public Contract Code, Section 22050, this matter will be brought before your board for review at each regular meeting. The project is expected to be completed within the authorized budget. It is recommended that your board find that you have reviewed the emergency action regarding Quinale Mill Road and determine that there is a need to continue the action. Or fits are required for continuation.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
The first is simply thank you for attention to the item. It's critical to Cedar Ridge. We spoke about that once before. The other is, has staff considered the liability of the parties responsible for the dam just both at culvert and the responsibility of those parties for the maintenance of that structure? Its deterioration and failure is in part responsible for the problem with the culvert. This is not the first year that that's been a problem. About 10 years ago, that structure failed and caused problems there before, so.
We have been in contact with the property owners and will be discussing this separate from the river culvert.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board for the District III Supervisor.
Just real quick, so it is a, it's a time and materials bid?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other thing, 'cause I brought it up last week, are you still sticking with the three culvert pipes?
Yes. Yes, it'll be three 60-inch HD PTO pipes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other board questions?
Yeah. Just right off the top, thank you so much for the speed with which you've addressed this problem. I know that it's a frustrating situation for the residents of Cedar Ridge, and this is about as fast as a project of this type can be done. And the fact that work is, as we speak, work is ongoing to repair this culvert, I think is very impressive, and it's a testament to the priority that the CRA Office and the board have placed on this. And, you know, on behalf of the residents of District II, I, my sincerest thank you. And this is, the cost of this is below the initial estimate, is that correct?
It is. It's, that's kind of our target cost, obviously, as things progress, I can change a little bit, but we refuse to give skin to the dollar.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other board comment? I just want to say that our, pardon me, our road crews are in training this morning out of Striker Court, and we bought them breakfast this morning, and I had an opportunity to talk to them. And I just want to share my thoughts that I shared with them to our public. I'm not really sure that the public fully appreciates the incredible effort it took. And I know we didn't fix everything as fast as some people would like, but we fixed it about as fast as we could. And the incredible effort that those ladies and gentlemen did to make recovery from our very unusual storm season happen. And so, this is just another step in that process. It's probably one of the most important steps that we have, and I want to echo my counterparts or my contemporaries' thoughts that expressed already, that this is kind of a Herculean effort to get this contract out the door and get working on this. So, thank you very much, and please thank the staff as well. With that, I'm looking for a motion. I Supervisor Gray.
Just a quick comment. Striker Court this morning, you know, I mentioned to the group that the public only sees the pothole in front of their house that the driveway, that's what they're most concerned about. But, you know, it's a global, global thing. It's a county-wide thing. We have 600 miles of roads, and we will get to them, but we can't get to each one every single day. It just takes time to do it. So, I certainly appreciate the work that the staff does, and they'll continue, they'll continue to do a good job.
Supervisor Hallam?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the board has found, has reviewed the emergency action regarding Quinale Mill Road and determined that there is a need to continue action.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor, sign the flag, they say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Unanimous? 5-0. Would you collect the board, please, read item number 18.
Consideration of approving correspondence to Cal's Dairy Disposal Waste Management Company regarding credits to customers for missed services during February 29th and snowstorms. Thank you. Deputy County Councilor, Kyla Driftoff, here to present a letter that is part of their board packet. It's addressed to Waste Management, their public sector services manager, and also sent to the address that's part of the Waste Management franchise agreement. As you are aware, you've heard from those constituents and individuals who've come to public comment, that during the snowstorms, Waste Management was unable to provide the services for one, two, three, sometimes four weeks. And the Waste Management, to this point, has not agreed to provide credits to those customers who have missed service. So, in reviewing the franchise agreement, what we have looked at is that, yes, there are provisions in the franchise agreement that says if the roads are unsafe, that Waste Management is not required to provide the service. However, when you look at billing, it says that they will bill for services provided. These services were not provided, and so, the county's position is that the Waste Management customers are entitled to a credit. So, that is what is presented in the letter. County staff has been in communication, both the head staff and you supervisors have been in communication with Waste Management with regard to this issue since early February, when it was first brought up. And so, at this point, we are just putting the county's position in formal writing and having your board send it.
Okay. Can I have, does the board have any questions upstairs? Can I have, does the Board have any questions? Okay, can I have a public comment, please?
I want to thank Supervisor Kirk for certainly bringing this attention to the forefront of this. Waste Management is just my favorite company. We're going to be very disappointed that we haven't had any solid Waste Committee meetings. They've all been canceled recently, so it's, I don't know, five or six in a run now that have been canceled, where we can't look them in the eye and have a discussion and have them look us in the eye also.
Okay, any other public comment? Bring it back to the Board. Any Board comments? Supervisor, I'll start with Supervisor Kirk. Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for jumping on this. Yeah, as you said, back in February, you know, I grew up in the snow, so I get it. I get the safe conditions, but it all comes down to the contract, and we want to provide good service for, what we like, Waste Management to provide good service for its constituents. And so, yeah, my phone blew up for four weeks. My email blew up for four weeks. So, this was just me bringing my constituents' concerns to the Board, pushing it, and so, thank you guys for your hard work. Thank you for getting this going quickly, and, thank you.
Supervisor Brennan.
Yeah, just want to thank Supervisor Kirk, and certainly staff. We know the entire county was impacted by this. I had parts of my district left in the pickup, the eastern portion of it. And that is a very rare occurrence, where they have that kind of snow for a period of 10 or 12 days. So, this is important. We have acknowledged the work of a number of our departments that had challenges, but they got the work done. You know, there were some obvious challenges with this, but certainly I don't see how they can fulfill any of our services. That case is not.
Supervisor Campbell.
Yeah, I agree completely with Supervisors Kirk and Brennan. You know, if the services are better than the record, then, you know, how can they then ask customers to pay for it? And thank you, staff, for looking into that and finding that it doesn't comply with the contract. And just kind of, I guess, a general question, you know, Waste Management is an enormous nationwide company. This can't be the first time this issue has ever come up with them, in our jurisdiction or in others. And so, why, I mean, do you have any insight as to why they're taking this path? I mean, just, do you think they can get away with it, or?
We're not entirely sure. Now, in reviewing their operations plan, which they submitted to the county in January of this year, they make it very clear that during winter months, if they have missed accounts, so places that are not picked up because of winter conditions, that the drivers are marking those. And so, Waste Management, according to the information, or the plan that they have provided to the county, should have all of this information at their fingertips. And so, really, from staff's perspective, Waste Management is the one that has the information that can provide these credits, and it really should not be on the customer to call in and request that they not be charged for something that they didn't receive. Especially considering we've heard reports that individuals attempting to call in have been on hold for upwards of half an hour, if they've come through.
And I've heard that as well. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
All said.
Okay, it has all been said, but I'm going to put a big exclamation point on it, because I'm okay with them not doing the service. I don't want their people getting hurt anymore than I want our people getting hurt. Okay? But you can't hold your customers to a contract if you're not going to hold yourselves to that contract. And as far as I'm concerned, this is breach of contract territory, okay? And I want, in my view, I think our staff is justified on behalf of our citizens to pursue this very aggressively. So, I hope you do. I want to thank you for the awesome work that you've done already, but this is inexcusable, as far as I'm concerned.
One more thing. The letter is currently addressed as required by the franchise agreement. However, if your Board is interested in copying any other individuals within Waste Management, or otherwise, we can...
I would like to propose that we copy everybody in the chain of command, so to speak, the hierarchy, all the way up to the President and CEO of the company.
Well, thankfully, Kimmy Farland already pulled that information, which I have right here, and I can add to the letter.
Thank you.
I want to add that, RC, RC, we might as well jump to them, and there's all the Waste Division, and there may be other towns that could be having the same experience.
All right, add C back while you're at it. Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
All right, so I move on and send the letter. Considering of approving correspondence to Cal's here disposal, the Waste Management Company regarding credits to customers for missed services during February 2009's snowstorm.
Okay. You've got them.
With some changes.
So, I've got a motion by Supervisor Kirk and a second by Supervisor Campbell. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, thank you. Would the Clerk of the Board please read item number 19?
This is a presentation of the Chair's amended appointments to the Board of Supervisors Committee's appointments for 2019.
Okay, the Board members all should have a copy of the new ones. I went through them in detail at the last meeting, when it wasn't an agenda item. I'm not going to go through them again. Thank you, County Council, once again, for keeping me straight. If anyone has any issues with them, please come talk to me, and as I've done in the past, I will do my best to sort out everybody's things. Just so you know, the changes came about. One was, in particular, was already agreed to by the alternate in the primary to swap their roles. And then, we have a little bit of a conflict between our Water Policy Committee, or our Water Agency's Water Policy Committee, and our Natural Resources Supervisor's Natural Resources Committee, because they're touching on a lot of the same stuff. So, we had a situation where it was possible, although we worked very hard to prevent that, where three Board members might have access to the same kind of information, and that's not permitted under the ground act. So, we did a little swapping around there so that we have the same Board members on both those committees, and we avoid that conflict. There were some other annoying ones, but anyway. So, that's a presentation. There's any Board members, did anything, public comment? I guess I have to ask for that. I don't want to do reports right now, because I know you've got a rather lengthy report, don't you, Supervisor Brennan? Okay. Yeah, we'll just hang out here for a minute and 15 seconds, and we'll do our 10 o'clock appointment. You can get set up. Actually, let's just go ahead and do a five-minute. We'll do a 10-minute break right now. 10-minute break, let them get set up. We're going to go ahead and reconvene the Board of Supervisors after our break. And would the Clerk of the Board please read our 10 o'clock, first 10 o'clock appointment?
This is a public hearing to consider Schulson, Johnson, McDonald, and it's an ordinance for zone change and notice of exemption.
Hello, everyone. I'm Natalie Rizzi, and I am the project planner for Zone Change RZ-18-008. And here are the vision, mission, and value statements as adopted by Tuolumne County, which we utilize for projects we receive. One value is that we encourage innovative and creative approaches. And the project description. Ordinance for Zone Change RZ-18-008 to rezone a 0.08 acre portion of a 6.02 acre parcel from O-Air, which is open space airport combining, to RE1DMX Air, which is residential estate, one acre minimum, design control combining, mobile home exclusion combining, airport combining, and to rezone a 0.08 acre portion of a 1.31 acre parcel
Let me all get it real quick.
from RE1DMX Air to RE2DMX Air, which is residential estate, two acre minimum, with the same combining districts. The zone change is being requested to facilitate a lot line adjustment between the three legal parcels. The septic system for the Schulson property, APN 33-040-36, was built over the property line into open space. Therefore, the applicants are requesting the lot line adjustment and zone change to allow existing buildings and septic systems to be located on the appropriate property. The lot line adjustment, T-18-029, is not being considered at this time and will be reviewed by the county surveyor at a later date. The project site is located at 21831 and 21833 Sawmill Flat Road, just southeast of the intersection of Parrot's Ferry Road and Sawmill Flat Road in the community of Columbia. The project site consists of three parcels, APNs 33-040-31, 35, and 36. The general plan land use designation of the project site is estate residential and low-density residential. The three legal parcels of the project site are as follows. And here is a map of the project site and the surrounding parcels. And here is a map showing the two 0.8 acre portions proposed to be rezoned. Notices of the proposed project were sent to adjoining property owners within 500 feet. Notices were sent via mail on August 14, 2018, to 14 property owners. The Community Resources Agency did not receive any responses. Chapter 17.70 of the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code requires zone change projects to meet the necessary findings. Here are the required findings for the zone change application. Evidence and staff's response to each point can be found in the agenda report. In your decision process today for Zone Change RZ-18-008, the Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors may either approve the project, approve the project with any modifications, deny the project, or send the project back to staff to work on. Are there any questions?
Okay, are there any questions by the Board? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. We're going to take public comments at this time. Does anyone have any public comments on this project?
Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I'm Richard Schulson, one of the applicants.
Okay.
My wife is there in the audience. We want to thank planning staff for all their hard work, and we want to also thank the Planning Commission for their unanimous consent for this project. And we're asking that you consider the same and follow their recommendations. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments on the project? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, this is one of those rare opportunities where this is actually in my district. And so, I want to also thank staff for working through this, and I would move approval of Zone Change RZ-18-008 based on the findings A through D.
Second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Brennan, a second by Supervisor Gray. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes 5-0. Would the Clerk of the Board please read our second 10 o'clock appointment?
Public hearing to consider Moyles and ordinance for a zone change and a notice of determination.
Staff report.
Hello, again, I am Natalie Rizzi, and I am also the project planner for Zone Change RZ-18-002. And again, here are the vision, mission, and value statements as adopted by Tuolumne County, which we utilize for projects we receive. The project description. Ordinance for Zone Change RZ-18-002 to rezone a 60.01 acre parcel from AE37, which is exclusive agricultural 37 acre minimum, to RE2, which is residential estate, two acre minimum. The zone change is being requested to facilitate tentative parcel map, T-18-012, to divide the parcel into four parcels, which are 11.2, 15.7, 16.9, and 16.2 acres in size. Tentative parcel map, T-18-012, is not being considered today, and we will be heard by the county surveyor at a separate public meeting. The project site is located at 16716 and 16720 Draper Mine Road, approximately 1,370 feet northwest of the intersection of Draper Mine Road and Salisbury Vale Road. Assessor's parcel number 043-290-030. The general plan land use designation of the project site is estate residential. And here is a map of the project site and surrounding parcels. The proposed RE2 zoning is consistent with parcels to the north and south. Notices of the proposed project were sent to 132 adjoining property owners via mail on June 12, 2018. The county received eight response letters. One was in support, one was neutral, and six were in opposition. We have received an additional phone call expressing opposition and an email in opposition, which we have handed out. The letters in opposition raised concerns about traffic and the impact to Draper Mine Road. While zone changes cannot be conditioned, tentative parcel map, T-18-012, has been conditioned to require payment of traffic impact mitigation fees for any new single-family dwelling constructed on the parcels created. Concerns were also raised about noise impacts. The map has been conditioned to limit the effects of noise on nearby parcels. The hours of construction have been limited. Additionally, any use of the parcels must comply with the noise limits as indicated by the general plan. Concerns were also raised about the availability of water. The project proposes to be served public water by the Tuolumne Utilities District, or TUD. TUD has reviewed the project and indicated that there is capacity to serve the project via water mains to the north and west of the project site. Concerns were also raised about the loss of agricultural land. The agricultural element of the general plan indicates that high-value and locally important agricultural lands are indicated by the AG designation. The project site has a designation of ER. The agricultural rating system matrix is used to provide a numerical score to the agricultural lands to determine their value. The matrix was used to give a value to the project site, which fell into the category of lands of limited importance. The general plan directs the county to allow conversion of ag lands of limited importance. Concerns were also raised about the ability to further divide each parcel. Any future land division will go through the sequel process, and potential impacts will be assessed. It is likely that future division of these parcels would be processed as a subdivision map. Any future land division will go to a public hearing. Land divisions creating four parcels or less are approved by the county surveyor, and five parcels or more are approved by the Board of Supervisors. Finally, the letters in opposition raised concerns about fire hazards. The Tuolumne County Fire Prevention Bureau has reviewed the project and provided conditions which have been incorporated into conditions of approval for the map, which reduce fire hazards. Additionally, fire hazard reduction is addressed through the vegetation management plan, which the project site is required to comply with as an ongoing condition. Chapter 17.70 of the Tuolumne County Ordinance Code requires zone change projects to meet the necessary findings. Here are the required findings for the zone change application. for the zone change application. Evidence and staff's response to each point can be found in the agenda report. Your decision process today for zone change, RZ18-002. The Tuolumne County Board of Supervisors may either approve the project, approve the project with modifications, deny the project, or send the project back to staff to work on. Are there any questions?
Board, do you have any questions?
Let's go to public comment.
This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. We're going to do this a little bit differently than we did the last one. I'm going to do comments by people that are in support of the program. Then I'm going to do comments by people that are opposed to the program, project, I'm sorry. And then I will take comments by people that are neutral. If there are comments opposing the project and anyone wants to, that spoke in favor of the program, you must, or project, you must speak in favor of the project to do a rebuttal. But anyone who did speak in favor of the project wants to rebut anybody that, any comments that were made in opposition to the project, we will allow that. And if there is a rebuttal, then we will allow the opposition a surrebuttal. But again, it must be someone that spoke in opposition to the project to begin with. If there is no rebuttal, there will be no surrebuttal. Anybody got any, any member of the public have any questions on that? Okay, with that having been said, I will offer the project proponents the first opportunity to speak.
My name is John Moyles. And my wife and I own the property. We've owned it for about 30 years. And we've been brushing and trimming the trees and mowing for almost every year since we bought it. But we're getting old. And it's time to do something. About 20 years ago, Bev Shane recommended that we, because they did a new general plan then, 20 years ago, or something like that. And she recommended the general plan designation that it is now. And she recommended we get the zoning done, but it was going to cost money. And we were still making payments on the property. So we didn't do it. But time's run out. We've got to do something. So between our engineer and the planning department, they worked out what should, what they figured should be. And I'll shut up and let my wife say something.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment in favor of the project?
That's not from Paige. I'm Myrna Moyles. And yes, this had been on the books as RE2 general designation for 20 years or more. Glad to see that it's said that way. Our proposal is not to start splitting it all up. We have grandkids and great-grandkids and another one on the way. And it's for them. It's not for us to just jump in there and make how many, I don't know what, how many we could. But on the zoning that we're asking for, the very most that could be done on those parcels is two residences. And we don't intend to do that because it's basically going to go under the name for our kids. Not in their name right now, but that's our plan. So we hope that you consider it and go along with us. And that, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else who want to speak in favor of the project? Seeing none, I'll entertain comments in opposition to the project. Seeing none, I'll entertain comments neutral to the project.
I'm asking for more information. It's not for or against. I was just curious about any requirements regarding access to the roads. I know of other people who have sought to do splits in property on Highway 49 and Vilas Road that were simpler than this and were required to put in a left-hand turn lane. And just wondering what the planning department's guidelines are for when there's a requirement for a left-hand turn lane and when there isn't? And how this fits into the evacuation plans? Will there be adequate road access for people when and if that area needed to evacuate? Because Draper Mine Road and Salisburyville Road already are narrow. And just how that would impact any congestion?
Okay. Can staff get with her and answer those questions? Okay, thank you very much. Having no comments in opposition, there will be no rebuttal. And therefore, there will be no surrebuttal. And I am closing the public hearing. Bring the matter back to the board. And I believe Supervisor Campbell, this one's yours.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to clarify. So I looked at the project and I read some of the comments that were of residents that had questions about it and concerns. And I think one of the primary concerns that came up was that people don't want 30 homes to be built in that area. And so my understanding of this is that the way the zoning change is going to take place, there's two houses per parcel on four parcels. So that's eight houses. Currently, they are authorized for three. So really, you're looking at a net addition of five potential houses. And that's only if that was their intention in the first place. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So if down the road, the property owners sold one of the four rezoned parcels, would that new owner, what would, what steps would that new owner have to take to further subdivide that to add additional houses? Would it go before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors again?
Yes, they would apply for a land division application with the county surveyor. And at that point, the division may be treated as a subdivision. And in that case, it would go to the Planning Commission and the Board.
Okay, so if there was further development, and the long and short of it is that we would have another opportunity to review that and make a decision at a later point?
That's correct.
Okay. And the RE2 designation is pretty consistent with the other properties in the area. It seems like it's all RE2, RE5. In fact, this is kind of the only, it's sort of like this large island in the middle of RE2 and RE5. So your views, it's pretty consistent with the other parcels in the area? Okay.
You have to answer the question in the mic.
Yes, it is consistent with other parcels in the area.
And then the last thing is if there were traffic impacts for additional homes that were built in this area, there would be mitigation fee assessed for that. So if there were any further traffic impacts, they'd have to pay for it, essentially.
Yeah, any new single-family dwelling is required to pay the traffic impact mitigation fees at the time of the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, any other board questions or comments?
It's their personal property, so I like it.
I would point out, and I appreciate the Moyles' comments on this. And we see this. Folks have ag property. They've tried to do something with it, work it. What we don't want is to see it, for all intents and purposes, abandoned. And so I actually think that we'll see better use if this project goes forward and applaud, you know, trying to provide a space for your future generations to still be a part of the landscape up there. So this scenario is not uncommon. And I want to thank staff for also helping work through this.
Supervisor Campbell?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the zone change as written.
Are there conditions that need to be in the motion?
There are no conditions for the rezone.
Okay.
And then adopt conditions A through D.
Okay. Did we get the motion right? Okay. Can I get a second? Supervisor Gray, old as he is, was quick.
I'm quick.
Quick right there. There we go. Supervisor Campbell moved. Supervisor Gray seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0. Would the clerk of the board please read our third 10 o'clock appointment?
Consideration of approving the Rawhide Road Bridge Replacement Project
Are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. Blossom Scottheim, Associate Engineer with the Community Resources Agency. Again, in 2004, Tuolumne County applied to the Caltrans Office of Local Assistance for funding from the Federal Highway Bridge Program to replace the Rawhide Road Bridge over Woods Creek. And in 2005, your board awarded a contract to Quincy Engineering, Inc., to complete the preliminary engineering for the replacement of the bridge. In 2008, Caltrans required numerous additional environmental studies, including an updated traffic study, which ultimately led to Caltrans requiring extensive mitigation related to future traffic protections along the Highway 108 corridor, including signalizing Fifth Avenue. In 2012, a new traffic study was performed, which determined that the traffic signal at Fifth Avenue was a standalone project and, which is now substantially complete. In October 2018, the Environmental Coordinator for Caltrans Local Assistance approved a categorical exclusion for the project under NEPA. And in 2018, a mitigated negative declaration was signed by the county's environmental coordinator pursuant to CEQA and was circulated for public review. The county review period closed on January 8, 2019, and the county received five comment letters. The public can review a copy of the initial study mitigated negative declaration on the county website under environmental review documents. Upon your board's approval of the Rawhide Road Bridge Replacement Project and the mitigated negative declaration, staff will be able to commence right-of-way activities, including permitting and right-of-way acquisition. Right-of-way activities must be completed and certified prior to the county requesting funding for construction. Right-of-way activities are currently budgeted in fiscal year 1819 and are reimbursable under the Highway Bridge Program at 88.53%. Construction is planned for spring of 2021. However, the actual schedule will depend on the duration of right-of-way activities. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, the environmental coordinator for the county has conducted an initial study to determine whether the proposed project may have a significant effect on the environment. On the basis of that study, the environmental coordinator has determined that although the project could have a significant effect on the environment, there will not be a significant effect in this case because project-specific mitigation measures have been added to the project. Therefore, a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared. Pursuant to Section 21091 of the Public Resources Code, the mitigated negative declaration was made available for public review. The review period was 30 days in length and closed on January 8, 2019. The CRA received five comment letters on the MND. The comments and responses thereto are included in the attached response to comments on the draft initial study proposed mitigated negative declaration for consideration by the decision-making body pursuant to Section 15074 of the state CEQA guidelines. It is recommended that your board adopt the mitigated negative declaration, including the mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the Rawhide Road Bridge Replacement Project Number 1331, based on findings A through F, and that your board approve the Rawhide Road Bridge Replacement Project Number 1331, based on findings A through C. I have Amy Dorr Smith with me from our consultant, Ari West, if there are any questions.
Board, do you have any questions?
Just a quick comment here. 15 years, we're not rushing this project. It's, it seems like it's been going on forever. I hope that we can at least get the bridge built in my lifetime.
Achieving this environmental clearance under both NEPA and CEQA will be a huge milestone for this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and ask for a public comment on this project.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Limke, president of the Tuolumne County Building Industry Association and a local home builder. We're excited to support the approval of this project and looking forward to being a concerned party through the successful completion of it. It's very positive to see the traffic mitigation fees that we pay on jobs that you approved today helped to contribute seed money to get projects like this built in the future. Nothing like today's jobs approval, helping to pay for infrastructure that was built over 100 years ago and revitalize it for the entire community. Thank you very much for your support.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. My name's Dave Scheller. I'm one of the property owners of businesses that are affected by this project. There's no question doubt we need the bridge installed. The existing bridge on Rawhide Road is inadequate. What brings me here today is, one, how this project's been handled from the beginning. As you're aware, this has been going on over for 15 years. When projects to this magnitude are proposed, it automatically puts a cloud over surrounding businesses and property owners because nobody knows how these projects are going to affect their property. In this case, there's three businesses that access Highway 108 off Jamestown Road, mine being one of them. When this project was originally proposed, we went, me and a couple of other business property owners went to the Community Development Department. And we asked that we be included in discussions on how the access to Jamestown Road would be affected off Highway 108. For quite a period of time, we were ignored till we finally pushed the envelope. And we had a meeting with the people that were in the process of designing the project. And I'm talking back about 13 years ago, from the 15 years ago this started. At that point, we gave them our contact information. And it says, can you please keep us, you know, let us know what's going on because we're concerned how this is going to affect our project? From the time we had that meeting, From the time we had that meeting, gave my information, there was no follow-up or contact from anybody involved in that project. So how we found out about how the project was developing was pretty much through the rumor mill. And at one point, Jamestown Road, they were going to actually bulb it off to where you weren't even going to have any access off one oh eight to Jamestown Road. And then after we got a hold of them and says, hey, you know, one, you haven't kept in contact with us, two, this isn't going to work. Then it went to the next stage, another couple of years, then they decided to do a right turn out of Jamestown Road. Okay, it's still not going to work because what they're also proposing was all eastbound traffic, which is traffic goes from Jamestown to Sonora, would not have access to Jamestown Road. So pretty much, then we're saying, okay, well, how are people going to find our businesses if we're cutting off all the eastbound traffic going to Sonora, plus now we've only got a right turn out? Well, they says, well, what we'll do then, we're still not going to allow eastbound traffic access, they're going to have to go up to Fifth Avenue and double back around, which is about a mile track to come back, and we'll go ahead and go a right turn out. So, and was it still right turn out and right turn in?
It is.
Okay, because the last map I got in the mail didn't like it, indicates, I didn't know if we were just going to a right turn out. So now where we're at, it's a right turn in and a right turn out. But we've totally lost our eastbound access. And so we've brought this up, and we said, well, we'd like to have discussions how we can work on mitigating this. We've gotten no response. And what brings me here today is, is like, okay, two things have happened. Because this project has gone on for fifteen years, nobody's able to really sell their property because nobody's going to buy a piece of commercial property not knowing how it's going to be affected by access, because access is huge with commercial property. Two, there's one party that wanted to sell his business, his property's been in for a lot of years. You can't find a bank to even loan on that property because they don't know how the access is going to be affected, which is going to affect the value of the property. So for the last fifteen years of this project, it's put a huge cloud over the people that own this property, on their ability to either sell their property or refi the property or do anything about it. So where we're at now is, because we weren't keeping abreast of a lot of these changes, a couple of years ago, they had a public meeting, which Mr. Rotafer was at, and the business members, we asked that, and I asked personally, that I'd be sent emails every month on this project, on how it's going along, because now we're getting down to the final design changes of this project. So we didn't want any surprises, because you know, once it gets to this point of the project, it gets rubber stamped and done. So Mr. Rotafer directed Duke York and county staff to send me monthly emails on the updates. That didn't happen. So then we came back a second time at the Board of Supervisors meeting. I asked Mr. Rotafer again to direct county staff to keep me updated on monthly, you know, just a quick email, there's no changes, or yes, here's what's going on, because we have a lot of concerns because we're getting to the crunch time in the final design. That didn't happen again. So I come back a third time, and Mrs. Brennan here directed county staff, which is the third request, to say, hey, you need to, you know, keep him abreast of what's going on with this project. Because I'm also sharing this information with surrounding property owners, you know, of letting them know what's going on with this too. Once again, that didn't happen. So a fourth time, at this point of the fourth time, was a change of management with the Community Development Department, where you had the new, you know, the new guy, Dave, came in to take Bev's place, Quincy was taking over. So in all fairness, I met with Quincy, and I says, here's what's going on, you know, this is, the people handling this project are not taking direction from the board. I says, the county is spending over, is spending over four hundred thousand dollars a year for an economic development department to recruit new business and retain business and trying to get rid of this bad cloud of how Topeka County is hostile to do business in. And here we have this going on to where we can't even be included in the discussion of what's going on here for our input on how this project affects our business. So long story short, basically, nothing really changed. And I just kind of followed up to where finally, I met with the new Community Development Director, Dave, and he says, we're now to the point where we got the environmental stuff done, we got the design done, we'll send this to you in the mail, which they did. And then I commented on it. And the comments, so when I read the current environmental report that you're going to vote on today, in that report was one thing, a couple of things I addressed. One, we have no eastbound access to Jamestown Road, so you're going to have to go up to Fifth Avenue and come back around. Two, why aren't we opening up any discussions on how we could possibly impact, you know, lessen this impact, whether it be with signage or moving Jamestown Road access or something to perhaps get us eastbound access or some type of signage on Highway one oh eight, Jamestown Road, be able to direct people how to get back to these businesses, because a lot of these businesses are dependent on out-of-town traffic and tourists. So they're not, unless you're a native here, you're not going to know how to circle back around. The other area I addressed in the environmental impact report was, they said during construction, temporary access on Jamestown Road to these businesses, the businesses would not be affected. So there again, you know, as vocal as I've been on this project, I'd like to know, one, who made that determination, and who did they talk to? Because they didn't talk to any of the businesses on Jamestown Road on how they might be affected while this project is under construction. And you'd think of all the people they would talk to would be me, because I'm the most vocal one on this project that's come before the board. So I wouldn't have to come down here today and have this conversation. So, one, we need to discuss the impacts, you know, or we're basically, or we're going to, you know, how we're going to be impacted and how this is going to be mitigated, because we've not had that conversation. And on this environmental impact report, it says, none of these businesses are going to be affected during this temporary time of construction for three to six months. So at this point, before you vote for this document, because we have not had this conversation at all, even though I've asked for it, how are we going to mitigate the eastbound access to Jamestown Road being totally eliminated, far as how are we going to help these businesses mitigate losing eastbound access? Two, is there not a possibility of moving Jamestown Road up further, a one oh eight, to where it would allow eastbound access, because the turn lane is already in place? Three, whether we'd have discussions of signage, which I know when it comes to signage on Highway one oh eight, you have to go through Caltrans. That's why I opened up this conversation years ago, saying, you know, thirteen or fifteen years ago, I says, you know, let's have this conversation. That way, when we get to this point, the business people can say, you know, yes, you know, we've met with Caltrans, they're agreeing to signage, yes, we've met with Topeka County, they're agreeing to signage, or no, we've agreed to move Jamestown Road. And that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, Mr. Scheller.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yes. Do you have a solution?
Yes.
What is it?
Okay. The solution I have is, we can do one or two things. We could take Jamestown Road and move it, move it east, you know, towards between Fifth Avenue and where it is now, and you can have access to Jamestown Road that way, which is about where that mobile home is. And I believe there'd be enough access to do that, to where, you know, you're coming up right there between the, or right next to that cemetery there. You could have Jamestown Road moved to that location, and then that would give us all our eastbound access and everything, you know, would take care of, would really mitigate that whole issue right there by acquiring that piece of property and moving Jamestown Road to that location.
But wouldn't it put that intersection too close to the existing Fifth Avenue intersection? I don't think there's enough room there to have another side road.
That's the problem. Caltrans requires that they have a certain length of left turn lanes due to the volume of the traffic. So they would not allow us to do that. That has been looked at.
See, but that's where you've asked, you know, you know, your guys' staff to keep in contact with me, to where we're not having to have those conversations today, and we could, because I can't look at those numbers and say, how many feet were short?
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Well, I was going to answer the rest of his question, far as other, he asked, you know, for other ways we can mitigate it. I mean, I'm taking time out of my schedule here, and I'm the one that's impacted finance.
I understand.
I mean, so fast, a little empathy here, but that's what I'm saying. But the other thing we can do, because we haven't, is signage. And I've had that conversation too, far as signage there at Fifth Avenue, at one oh eight, you know, on both directions. Plus, when they turn on the Jamestown Road, signage again, which is, which is, county has authority to do, with signage and arrows pointing people onto that Jamestown Road to go down that road to double back to these businesses. And I'm happy to have any, you know, we can always agree to disagree, but unless we have this conversation, which I've asked for for years, I'm having to have this here when I shouldn't have to.
Okay, we're here now.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that we ought to look at the possibility of signage for that.
So, so, to back up, first of all, all the decisions about the access, the right in, the right out.
Right.
At one point, the bulb, the restrictions are all dictated by Caltrans, because that intersection and that connection to the state highway is within Caltrans right-of-way. So we are at the mercy of Caltrans on decisions on how Fifth Avenue encroaches on the state highway. Under our NEPA document, our National Environmental Policy Act document, we have agreed to a signage plan per se, just to simplify it, and that is something that will happen as design progresses and as we get closer to the actual construction.
Will you include Mr. Scheller on that design suggestion?
Absolutely. We're not to that point yet, but it is a requirement under our NEPA document.
At what point, what would we know that it would be that point to discuss signage? What would be a good trigger to bring me into the conversation?
When we get to that point in design, we're still working on our sixty percent design. We have a lot of drainage issues that we're working out right now that we need to get worked out before we continue to.
So you will promise, when that point comes, that you will get a hold of Mr. Scheller, talk about the sign issue?
Yeah, because I know when they originally, when Caltrans wanted to bulb Jamestown Road, what got them to drop that requirement on the bulb and agreed to, you know, the right turn right out was, right across the street at Humbug Street was allowed a right turn right out, but it was just on the opposite side of the road. I says, well, you've allowed it on that side of the road, so then, you know, you get into the other. But then we have the other thing, was this temporary construction access. How are we addressing that?
I don't think this is the place and time. We're looking at a project here that you personally agree that needs to be done. And we know when we get any type of these projects, there is not any way to hundred percent mitigate every single issue that comes forward. So I think, in looking at what I've looked at, I think they've done the best job possible. We want to include you in the signings, we agreed to that, and I'm prepared to.
Well, the other question is the temporary construction access, where they addressed in that report, in this report, and that's why I'm commenting down the environmental impact report, they said they, you know, that there's going to be no impact to the businesses during the temporary construction access of three to six months. And then the letter I sent to the county in regards to this report, is who did they talk to to discuss the impacts and how to mitigate those temporary construction access? As far as what was the plan to handle that?
Again, we've looked at that, and I, we appreciate your comments, and thank you very much.
So there will be no discussions on temporary road construction access to these businesses?
Well, the staff will work with you, we're not going to talk about it right now.
Okay, so they, so who's going to draw up the plan then for temporary construction access? Who'll be in charge of that?
Okay, our staff will be in charge of that, and we will get in touch with you.
Because that was my point, because they put in this report, there would be no impacts to the business, to temporary access, yet they didn't talk to anybody. That's the point I'm trying to make. And so what assures me that?
The temporary access is a physical fact.
Right.
Okay. They understand the impacts of the physics, of the physical facts of the problem. If they were going to close a lane or two lanes or whatever, they would know what those impacts are.
Well, I would think that at least part, you know, part of the discussion, they would at least take, have the courtesy to a cop to at least.
Can I just make one quick impact? During our NEPA studies, we prepared a community impact assessment report, which we did involve you and the other business owners in, and it was within that report that the mitigation measures were proposed to minimize impacts during construction.
But they didn't talk to any of us, though?
We did talk to you during the development of CIA, I believe.
No, not to myself, no. Or, because I talked to other property owners too, and so when this temporary construction act.
Okay, we're not, we're not going to debate it, okay?
I'm not trying to debate it, but I'm pointing out to you, you've just spent four million dollars in the past ten years to promote economic development in this county, to retain and recruit new businesses. And I'm bringing to your attention, where this conversation didn't have to happen today if they would have followed your directions and Sherry's directions and had this conversation prior to this meeting, I wouldn't have brought this stuff up.
Okay, Mr. Scheller.
But they didn't do that.
Mr. Scheller, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Any other public comments?
My name's John Moyle. My wife and I, we have forty-three acres adjoining one oh eight and Pulpit Rock Road. And we use Rawhide Road a lot, especially during the winter months. And that bridge, that old bridge, which my uncle, I was told as a kid, built it, the little old bridge. I was raised in Rawhide, my father was raised in Rawhide. But there wasn't much traffic then, but boy, I'll tell you, you try going up that highway now, and you're, that needs to be a four lane now. And they need to make darn sure, which I think you've figured out, to coordinate those stoplights, because what a holdup it is. I'm glad you're finally getting it done. Get it built, like Mr. Gray said. We get old before we know it, don't we, John?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, and I'm just going to say that I'm not going to claim that we're perfect, and we may have had some missteps along the way. But I've personally been part of at least three discussions, and so it's hard for me to understand how we've never had that discussion when I've been part of three of them. And I know that while staff may have missed a month or maybe two in the three or four or five years, I know that they have been pretty good at keeping the public informed on a monthly basis. So with that, I'm.
Would you like me to make the motion?
No. Actually, I would like to make a motion.
Here it is.
I got it.
It takes a little work.
Yeah. I move that we adopt the mitigated negative declaration, including mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the Rawhide Road Bridge Replacement Project based on findings A through F. And I recommend, and I move to, I move to approve the Rawhide Bridge Replacement Project number thirteen thirty-one based on the findings A through C.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, it passes, five zero. Thank you very much. Will the clerk of the board please read our ten thirty appointment?
Consideration of approving direction to staff regarding the fire safety and community resilience.
Okay.
Good morning, members of the board.
Good morning.
Chairman Rotafer, Liz Peterson County Administrator's, ooh, Liz Peterson County Administrator's office. I am here today to provide an update. As per your board's request, these are, these are a monthly update to your board and the public about the activities that have taken place under your board's initiative of this year for fire safety and community resilience. So the main task that has been going on this last month is in the area of education and outreach. As your board is aware, we have set up seven public meetings throughout the community in, starting actually, last night was our first one, and going through, let's see, April thirteenth. These are in a variety of areas throughout the county, really designed to target some of those higher-risk communities. The purpose of the meetings is to inform the public on activities that they can undertake to make sure that they are in a, or they are conducting tasks or work that would help with their homes, make their homes defensible, home hardening techniques, and then to be aware of all of the options or the activities as related to evacuations. We also have our animal control staff who are presenting, and they talk about preparing your pets and your livestock. And then we have some community partners who are also presenting. So that's the purpose of the community meetings. They, well, we've had one so far, but it was a, it was a success last night, I would say. It was a lot of good information that was shared, and so I would encourage the public to continue to come out to those meetings and get some of those questions answered, and really get some, I think, hard, concrete things that they can do, starting now, to help with their, their own resilience and their home. help with their, their own resilience in their homes and their own neighborhoods and communities. We also have been updating our county website with a lot of good information for the public to utilize. So I'm going to try and figure this out here. Hold on. Let's move on here, and we'll come back to this. So the task force that your board set up has, is meeting on a monthly basis, and we will be meeting later this month, actually later this week, to talk about the next steps in what, what projects we want to be doing. I envision that this next few meetings will really be some down and dirty work with our stakeholders to talk about the specific on the ground work that we want to pursue in the next coming months to make sure that the variety of projects that we need in the specific communities are taken care of. Okay, so if you would indulge me, I'm just going to take you on a little tour of our OES website here to show you what's available and so that the public can see, too, what's available for them. So if you go to our main Tuolumne County page, tuolumnecounty.ca.gov/oes takes you to our OES page. So there's a couple ways to get to the information. There's this button here, wildfire preparedness, or you can see it over here, too, on the tab over here with the various options, but let's click here and see. So this talks about your board's priority of wildfire preparedness, and then over here has a variety of information. So we've got the community meetings, information about where the community meetings are, their locations and times. We have over here options for creating your plan. So this is a lot of great information that homeowners and residents can use. So this is how folks can register for our emergency alert system, EverBridge, to receive notifications. I just want to remind everybody that we have landlines, everybody's landline, but as we all know, landlines are sort of disappearing. And so if you don't have a landline, you need to register with your cell phone, and you need to include your address in, when you register. And so you can click here, and it's a simple way to register for our EverBridge system. Here's a checklist for folks to prepare themselves for all around their homes, that things that they can do to make sure inside and outside that they have the things they need to be safe and prepared. Here is ready, set, go information from CAL FIRE about preparing yourselves, getting set to go, and then when you actually need to evacuate. And these, this material, I will let you know, is we are distributing in the community meetings as well. So it's a variety of things in there. There's information about defensible space and what folks should do to make their homes defensible. Then down here, we also have animal evacuation preparedness, so preparing your pets, preparing your livestock, variety of information, and then some things over here for kids, helping kids to understand the process of preparing themselves and what it may be like if they go through an evacuation. All of this information is meant to be shared, printed, and as you can see, it's, none of it is, is the county reinventing the wheel. We recognize that our partners have been doing this for many, many years, and so we are just trying to accumulate all of their information in one central location. We have over here the social media, so our Tuolumne County Fire Department, our CAL FIRE, Tuolumne County, Tuolumne Calaveras Unit, and then our sheriff's office. We have their Twitter feeds that are here because we recognize that social media is a huge way that folks receive information now, and so we want to make sure that we are promoting the most accurate forms of social media for residents, to keep themselves educated and informed, especially when we have an event and folks may be interested or wondering about evacuations. I also want to show you our community maps. Now, our GIS staff has been working tirelessly on making these happen. These maps are intended to inform folks of the various routes that they have in their communities. So it shows, I'll show you here, let's look at, hey, let's look at Apple Valley, the first one, I, there are 22 different communities listed here. The intention is that we have tried to gather every community here in the county, and if we haven't, we have a solution for that, too. But let me just show you here, this is the Apple Valley map. You can see the roads that are listed there. If there are community sites, we're calling those, and those are locations that could potentially be what we're calling temporary, or what are called temporary refuge areas for folks. But for now, they're just community locations. We don't want to necessarily say that these are areas where folks could go to in case there was a disaster, because we, as you all know, we don't know necessarily where the threat is coming from. And so to specifically designate on a map a location like that is our fire chief, Josh White, who couldn't be here today, but he suggested that we instead just educate folks on the various locations around the community that those types of events or shelters could take place, but we're not necessarily encouraging folks to, to look at that as their only option, if that makes sense. Okay, so down here, we've got the main highway. Of course, in Apple Valley, we know that there isn't a main highway that's near the community, but then we have the county roads, and then we have some of the local roads that are within the community. Here's the Phoenix Lake right here, as we know Apple Valley kind of surrounds. So the goal of these maps is for folks to really familiarize themselves with what roads they have, what roads are around, what their options are, encourage them to drive the roads ahead of time, to familiarize themselves with the condition of the road. Say if they have livestock and need to pull a trailer, can we pull a trailer on this road? So that's the intention of these maps, is again, another option for folks to be prepared ahead of time. And then down here, you'll see, this is on the back of the maps, the location of the fire stations, of the schools, and then, like I said, these community sites and their addresses. And I think that'll hopefully help folks as we, if and when there is a disaster or an emergency, that folks will hopefully be a little familiar with those areas. So that's the intention of these maps. And then I want to show you, too, this interactive map, and this is for, for folks, whether maybe their community, as far as they see it, isn't exactly represented on one of those 22 community maps, or if they just want to look around, play around, get a feel for what else is out there. So this map can be, let's see here, so this map can be dragged all around. You can see here, it's kind of small, but this is, you can drag this little viewer box to anywhere around in the county and get a better, you know, picture of what's around. You can also add, so right now, sorry, I went up to Calaveras, that's okay, too. You can zoom in here to get a better, let's go over here to say, kind of the Crystal Falls area, or Phoenix Lake. You can see the, the community is labeled. There are, you can also add, so at this point, there's, the hospitals are labeled, the schools are labeled, but you can also add the county, the roads. It gets a little, you know, thick with, with data, but anyway. So, and then there's a function here that you can, whatever you have on your screen, you can print it off. So we can add more, and we'll be working with this. Like I said, GIS staff have been working diligently to make this happen as soon as possible so that it was available for the community meetings, but we can add additional layers or additional things to this map, but I did want to show you there that, that we have this on our website here for folks to use. See, there it is with all the road layers. And, yeah, and then there's information, too, about PG&E's wildfire safety program, as we know that they are conducting a lot of work along their lines, and so if folks have questions about that, they can, they can click here as well. So, yeah, there's a lot of information here on the website, and we plan to keep this updated. Yes, on the additional planning resources, we have our multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, which was just approved, and we have our emergency operations plan, we have all kinds of other planning documents on our website for folks if they're interested in learning more. That's, oh, and one more thing I would like to add to, to my report here, just as far as tasks that we've been accomplishing this month. Our roadside shipping projects continue to, to happen. We had some delay in the weather, because of the weather, so we weren't able to move as quickly as we had hoped, because our roads crew and our baseline, CAL FIRE baseline crew, who are, who are doing primarily most of the work and doing an excellent job, they were off doing other things, like dealing with, you know, blown out roads and those kinds of things. But the work is happening. It is still happening on Priest Colterville Road. You can see in the staff memo, the list of the roads that we will be conducting work on in the next coming months here. So that's the update that I have for you. If you have any questions, or if you'd like to direct me in any additional ways, I'm happy to.
Board, board questions? Go ahead.
Yes, they are, working again on Priest Colterville Road. I was out there the other day. What type of questions are you getting at the meetings?
Well, we, so we only had the one last night, and how we decided to run it was that we would, we had our sheriff's office here, Sheriff Lee is here, could speak to what he received, but we, we decided to put the agencies around the room so that folks with targeted questions specific to, say, animal control and more information about how they could inform animal control about maybe their needs that they may have in an evacuation, they could go directly to them. Or if they had questions for the sheriff's office about how they, you know, conduct evacuations or decide on routes to take, or, you know, then they could go directly to them. So I can only speak to the questions that I receive specifically, but generally, it's about, let's see, the couple of questions that I got were about, you know, how do I know where to go in an event? And fortunately, like Under Sheriff Evans said last night, we unfortunately have a lot of experience with evacuations and emergencies. Our sheriff's office is very good about coordinating where to go based on where the threat is coming from. So that's, it's, you know, I hope that puts some community members at ease that our sheriff's office has a great job of finding the safe routes in coordination with our fire department.
The format is presentations by fire, sheriff, animal control, and partner agencies and some others, and then they break off, and so.
So they must have had it at Jamestown last night, so.
No, they had it at, actually, at Tuolumne, but since I'm the OES something or other as the board chair, I thought I'd go, so.
So I would expect you in Groveland also.
I'm planning on it.
All right.
You're going to have to put up with me, John.
I might owe you dinner.
Okay. Supervisor Brennan?
So, yes, in full disclosure, I was there also last night. We made a, sure, we sat in different parts of the room. So a couple of pieces that I want to highlight is, this group has been in existence for one month now, and we really wanted to concentrate on outreach, education, and how to do that. And so the community meetings are set up. Liz mentioned the one on Thursday night at Bellevue Elementary at 6:00. I'd also mentioned the one on March 26th at the Word of Light Fellowship in Mewock Village, March 27th at Salisburyville Elementary School Gym, all of these at 6:00. Monday, April 1st at the Groveland Community Center. There will be a couple additional after that, but we will be having a report out at our first Tuesday board meeting, so I'll stop there. Additionally, the work on the website, I want to thank staff, we've been really trying to pull this information together. It's important information. Thirdly, we're going to be doing, Clark Broadcasting has agreed to do a series, a four-week series on the Sunday morning program, and so we will be highlighting the different aspects of this, and it will begin the first Sunday in April. One of the benefits that we're going to have out of this, and last night was a perfect example, is we're going to find new partners and new ways to get this word out. Members of the county school board were present last night, and they've already reached out to me, and they said, you know, we used to do these programs in the schools, the get ready, go, and it stopped. And so they've invited us now to come to a, do a presentation for all of the superintendents in the county and find a way that we can disseminate this information through the schools. So we're going to continue to find those partnerships and build, and that's going to be really important, because we need to take, there are actions that we cannot underestimate that we need to be doing this spring in cleaning up and making our homes safe and knowing our communities, knowing our neighbors, and being responsible members of our communities. That message was really pushed very clearly and very loudly last night, and I'm going to say was really well received. I had a number of individuals that came up, thanked me, and said that this is information that we need to, we need to take responsibility for, and we need to start moving the needle on this on our own personal property. Having said that, we will be working, we will be moving into the next phase, which is, is how do we build on some of the vegetation program capacity grants programs that are out there? There are going to be numerous rounds that'll be coming through the state. All of our partners are really fixed on, on how we move that. A number of those grant applications will be due in June. The awards will be made in September. Two of the major silos that I'm aware of will be, are under that timeframe. There are others, and I want our community to know that our partners are actively engaged in trying to bring as many resources to Tuolumne County as are available. And so with that, we're going to continue to work very diligently with all of our partners, and I want to thank people that were at the presentations. Our county staff will be doing this in a number of locations throughout the next month. This is their evenings also. I want to thank them for participating. I think it was well received. We're going to continue to build on what we heard, and we're going to, I fully believe we are going to see new partners coming into the conversation to help us with this.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Like Sherry had said, the overwhelming message we sent was you got to take responsibility for you and your, your life and your neighbors, and that was very well received, empowering people. Thank you for the work here. This is up and running fast, so thank you. If you guys don't mind, I do have a few notes I want to go through, since we're here. First of all, when I Google Tuolumne County and the webpage comes up, a lot of people don't know that OES exists.
Sure.
Is there any way to get that fire prevention thing put right smack dab on the front page?
Yes, yes. So, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Like a stop sign.
Yeah, like bam, in your face, we're preparing. Number two, the maps throughout the communities, is there any way to have those updated with color? I know it sounds ridiculous.
There is, yeah, no, there is.
Like the highway would be red, or a safe zone would be red, I mean, just something.
I think the thought was making it really, like, that you could just print off some copies and give to your neighbors or whatever, and not expecting the color, and I think that's the advantage of this, this interactive, that it is in color, but.
But if, you know, if I want to throw some of these in my car, and if it's color coded, it would just be easier to identify stuff, but that's just kind of being a, in the, in the details, maybe a little too much, but something that I, that caught my eye. Another thing that, I don't know how the groups are going to put this together, but having, I'm having a lot of people reach out regarding emergency action plans, and I think it's important that we let them know that you're a resource to go to, because I think that as a board or as a community, we should create the shell or the design. That way, as people want to work with us and create emergency action plans for each individual community, they have kind of an umbrella of how to go about doing that. That way, you know, if I put together a folder of, here's Ponderosa, here's Tuolumne City, here's Twinheart, it's the same, it's the same layout. Maybe it's different information, but kind of a same layout. I think that would be helpful. And let's see here, my. And let's see here, my last thing, I wrote this out, you know, there's kind of three pillars that I've been kind of putting this all under. Right now, we're in the education phase. We're educating the community, getting them aware. Last night, I asked four questions at the end of the board meeting, and one of the questions was to the constituents, would you guys like to have a siren placed in Tuolumne City area or Ponrosa Hills area that would scream if all, if all their communications went out? And the majority of the hands went up. People would like to see a siren. I spoke with one of the fire chiefs there at Tuolumne Fire, and I guess they haven't, they do have a siren that's either on their building or on one of their engines that they're repairing. So maybe that would be a good quick fix that we could somehow help assist them to get up and running, but, you know, I've been, I've been bringing up the siren issue for a few, for a few board meetings, and the majority of, the overwhelming majority of those constituents are interested in that. The last two more things, I brought up a fire ordinance, asking constituents if they would like to see the county possibly pursue, you know, CAL FIRE has 4291A, which deals with homes and defensible space. So I asked the constituents, would you guys like to have a, an ordinance that would have the county address vacant lots? And I was hoping they wouldn't say so, but they actually cheered the idea. So it's something that we need to keep on our radar, whether or not we're gonna create it or enforce it, but it's something that we may need to look at. And then finally, I spoke with one of the chiefs from Tuolumne Unit regarding some of the access roads, like Old Buchanan Road. Apparently, they have some grants out to try and fix that road, get it up and running. Same thing with Mount Provo. I don't know if it's gonna tie into Mount Provo, I'm gonna have a conversation with them. But I'm glad that there's grant money and that people are pursuing to fix those roads, but one thing that's really concerning is between now and when the fire season kicks off, I don't know if there's anything we can do. I don't know if we can hire, we probably can't because we're a government agency, but like Mount Provo Road right now, if we're waiting a year or two for a grant and a fire kicks off, we're screwed. And I'd hate to come back and say, well, you know, we've been waiting on grant money. So I don't know if there's any way we can pursue fixing Mount Provo specifically because of Ponrosa Hills. If it goes up, I've been saying this and I've been saying this, I got stuck out there when I was door knocking. If we don't fix that road this fire season, something goes off in front of Ponrosa, it's gonna be a huge catastrophe. So I don't know if we can actively, I don't know if that conversation has to be with David, but I want to see if we can, if anything, just put some gravel down on these roads and make them accessible, or that one road, until we can get grant money to do the permanent fix. So those are my notes on that, but other than that, last night went great. Liz, thank you. Thank you to all our partners who aren't recognized as much as they can. Again, we give the direction, you guys do all the dirty work, so thank you, guys.
Okay. Ryan, you got anything?
And I'll just reiterate, I think it's already been said, but the, you know, the next meeting's gonna be held at the Bellevue Elementary School Gym. And so, you know, anybody in Crystal Falls, Cedar Ridge, Big Hill, you know, that whole area should come by, you know, to get information. And just, you know, I've had countless conversations with constituents about exactly this issue. And to me, it breaks down into three main elements. The first is, what are we doing as a county to make this a fire-safe community? You know, whether it's the roadside fires, fire fuel reduction program, updating the website, or holding these town hall meetings. So I think we're doing a lot in that area. What can individual property owners do? You know, whether it's creating defensible space, getting help, you know, knowing what trees to cut down and what shrubs to, anything touching your house, please, take it out. And then the last one that I've gotten a lot of questions about is, how can individuals get involved? And that's the one area where I think we could probably do more. There's a lot of energy out there in the community for fire safety, and I don't know that it's really directed in any one particular area. And, you know, and I don't necessarily know what the best path is to do that. I mean, whether it's establishing fire-wise communities, making a big push for additional volunteer firefighters, which we're in desperate need of. So that's, that's one area where I think we should be looking at, is how to harness the energy in the community for this issue, because there are a lot of people out there who have a lot to give, and we don't necessarily know how to use their skills. So I guess it's kind of a coordination thing. So I'm hoping that with, with these community meetings, that we can sort of find a pathway to use that, that energy from the community.
Okay. Yes.
Just to piggyback on that, I think one thing that might work, and I told Liz about it, maybe we could add this to the website, like how to volunteer or something, but CERT Community Emergency Response Team, I met a lady, so there's, there's a CERT organization, which is out of Twinheart, but it's for the entire county. People could volunteer, get trained there. Also, American Red Cross does free training online, so those might be two to start with, but that was one of the, I had three people come up to me last night and say, we want to help more, so absolutely.
We did have CERT and American Red Cross tables at the meeting last night, and they will be at all of our meetings. And we did actually have some opportunities for folks, like mentioned some, some ways that folks could get involved, like through the Fire Safe Councils or through the ACES with the animal control being a part of the volunteer group who helps to evacuate or shelter pets. But yeah, definitely, I think continuing to push that message, I think, is a great idea.
Public comment?
Yes, I almost did forget.
I would first of all like to thank each of you very much as a resident, a long-term resident, for the seriousness that you are demonstrating in addressing these issues. It's very much a source of relief, and I feel great gratitude to you, and thank you. And you're off to a great start. I also would like to thank Liz. I think that was a very impressive presentation. I was her counselor in high school, so it's really exciting to see one of the students that I knew doing so well. I think you've made a very good choice in having her do the work. It's really impressive. It's a great start and very user-friendly, because some of us older folks are not so media, social media savvy. That's the only thing I'd worry about with Twitter. I don't know how, I don't have a Twitter account. So, but two questions that did come up as I was listening to the report that I'm wondering about. One has to do with school evacuations, because I am retired, so my information could be outdated, but schools traditionally have bus drivers working on split shifts. So if there were an emergency during the middle of the day, such as they experienced in Paradise, they would not be able to evacuate the students. They would not have the bus drivers. The bus drivers would be at another job or at home, and they'd have to call them in, and they could have difficulties getting to the schools. And also how important it is that whatever the school plans are for evacuation, it's communicated to the parents. Otherwise, you're going to have, you know what it's like on Greenlee Road for Sonora Elementary already. Can you imagine if all of the parents were leaving work trying to get to the school because they didn't know what was happening with their kids? So I think that the school element is a really big area, and it's great that you're in communication with them, but I would wonder about the bus drivers being split shift.
And that, I know, is the topic they're gonna address.
Great.
Because they basically were saying, we need ready, set, go for our schools.
Yeah, I mean, that was the real message in Paradise. The other message or comment that I would make, and it's in your district, so you might want to check it out, is by chance you showed the map for Apple Valley. And Apple Valley, or as you know, the access is Lions Ball Mountain. It's not a wide road. It's easily in the snow, let alone in an evacuation. It would be easily a mess. One thing could, it's so narrow, it could really make it a mess. I know that there is an alternate exit route that's put in, it's a fire route, that goes through Apple Valley Estates and down to Lower Hillview. I happen to live in Upper Hillview, and I'm familiar with that road, and it is not adequate for evacuation. And I would encourage you to go out, you say, drive your roads, drive the road. It's very narrow, it's in terrible condition. There are cars, trucks parked alongside. I wonder if a fire truck could even get through. There is a chain between the end of Lower Hillview and Apple Valley Estates, and I guess you could take a wire cutter if somebody, if you were desperate, but it's not adequate evacuation. I mean, you know how many people live in Apple Valley. If they couldn't get out Lions Ball Mountain, they really couldn't get out Lower Hillview. So I would hope the fire department would be checking that, also checking their maps, because it shows on the county maps that Lower Hillview and Upper Hillview meet, and they don't. There's several houses in between. The roads never connect. So I hope the county is also using this opportunity to make sure their maps are correct and accurate. But you're off to a great start, and I'm very appreciative and grateful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being a great counselor.
With her, she was a piece of cake.
Okay.
You can't take any credit, I'm pretty proud.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a hard act to follow here. So I was at the Tuolumne presentation last night, and it was very good, and I really appreciated that it was quick and to the point. I've been in some meetings that were just interminable, and people, you know, got so tired they couldn't even pay attention anymore, and that there, they were people there afterwards to, you know, to talk to people, answer any questions they had, and the volunteer aspect was really terrific, too. So I, all those things were great. I had a couple of things that I felt weren't covered, and I just wondered if you were thinking of including those. Myself, I live in Cedar Ridge, and I and my neighbors are very concerned about evacuating through the forest. And we, you know, seeing what happened to people in Paradise, we're playing that video in our heads and saying, what would I do, what would I do? And so the more information can get out there to people about evacuation routes and how to safely evacuate. I was at one presentation, not this one, in which a fireman said, we used to tell people that they can, you know, take refuge in their cars, but now they melt. So something you don't think about, if you have the choice between a metal truck or a vintage car and, you know, something that's plastic, grab the metal car, you know, you don't think about those things. So give us those kinds of tips. Someone else was saying, put a wet towel around your face. Well, apparently, that's not what you want to do, because the steam can burn your lungs. So tell us what to do. Talk about the N-95 filters and masks, so we can be prepared if, you know, worst case happens and we're going down a road with fires on all sides where it's safe as possible. The other thing is, could you please identify, again, if we're trapped, where we can go to shelter in place, if there are any recommended areas, golf courses, lakes, whatever? Because that's what everyone is afraid of, is not being able to get out. And the final thing is more preventative, talking about clearing out gutters. I've cleaned out all my gutters, but my husband doesn't go on the roof anymore, we're older. And there is a gutter that is three stories up because we're built on a hill, and just, it's frightening to think about cleaning that out. So what is available for seniors and people who are low income in terms of supporting their ability to clean those gutters out and also to take care of their defensible space? I think Area 12 has, has some funding for a couple of hours of yard work. Maybe they could include something for cleaning out gutters. That's it.
They do, and we're in some expanded conversations on exactly that. How do we help some that are in our disadvantaged community, much like we have the tree mortality? Can't think of the acronym now.
TMAP.
TMAP, thank you. About trying to reconstitute something that would really address that.
Right, thank you.
But thank you for the comment.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, thanks. Do you need any further direction from the board? I think your chairperson is, I think you two can work it out. Any other board comments at this time? Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
You can pack up and go. Okay. How long do we anticipate our two closed sessions?
I think we can get it done by noon.
Okay. If we start now, or can we do reports?
I think we need to start now. We're gonna be done by noon.
Okay, will you read the closed session items, please?
This is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation authority, government code section 549569D1, Richard Tomlin versus County of Tuolumne at all, Tuolumne County Superior Court, case number CV62140, and conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, authority government code section 549569D2, and that's one case.
Okay, is there any public comment on either of the closed session items? Okay, with that, we're gonna recess into closed session. We will report out at 1:30 when we come back from our lunch break. Okay. The Board of Supervisors is back in session. With regard to item 22, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipation of litigation, we have nothing to report. With regard to item 21, closed session, existing litigation, Supervisor Gray moved and Supervisor Brennan seconded, and by a vote of five to zero, the board approved the county council to defend the county in the matter of Tomlin versus County of Tuolumne at all, Tuolumne County Superior Court, case number CV62140, a personal injury action arising out of an automobile accident on Chicken Ranch Road. The board approved the middle of the matter for determination of insurance coverage and tender of defense to CSAC EIA, and the board approved a retainer agreement with Lynn Garcia of Spinelli, Donald &amp; Knott to represent the county in this matter. Would the clerk of the board please read our 1:30 closed session item?
This is a closed session, public employee appointment, authority government code section 54957B1, interim economic development director.
I assume there's a possibility of a report out? Not that you're aware of, okay? We do not anticipate reporting out. Is there any public comment on this item?
Since I'm the only one here, I do know someone who told me he was gonna apply, and I would support his appointment to this position, because when I've had or been aware of things falling apart in the city, he's been one of my go-to guys to try to resurrect some development deals that have not gone well.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other public comment, we will be coming back, in any case, to close out the closed session, and we also have item 20 on the agenda remaining. We will be doing that as well when we are complete with the closed session. So with that, we're gonna recess into closed session. Thank you. Okay, we have recessed our closed session, 1:30. We will be going back into that, but we've got some time. So we're back in open session, and would the clerk of the board please read item number 20?
Reports.
While your mic is hot?
While my mic is on.
You got a report?
I don't have any reports.
Okay. County council?
Sure. The last few weeks, Chris attended a labor and employment law training by Labor Cassidy. Carlin and I spent a lot of time working on EDA, EPC, continued dissolution, and attended that meeting. Also worked on Q and M, emergency waste management. And then we had our first call with C-CIRX and our outside counsel on the general plan litigation. We have nothing to report, just we're starting that process. Thank you.
Okay. C.A.L.
Okay, I have spent the last few weeks meeting with department heads, so I've now officially met with all of the department heads, as I've been wanting to do. So some of them, I'm on my second round, so that has been really good and very enlightening. The other thing is, per your board's direction, one of the priorities is that we begin working with employee development. So we've had two department head meetings, the last both have been very well attended, and we will be bringing in a quarterly report from all departments here pretty soon that will, where we will start. Well, they will report out to the different types of trainings and development staff that participated in, and then we will get that staff to also participate in those, those meetings with you, so that you can hear directly from them what that impact was and what they brought back from that training.
Supervisor Campbell?
Okay, so I met with Public Health and Social Services with Supervisor Kirk, had a nice discussion with them, served on the Transportation Council with Supervisor Gray. We approved-
We approved, or I'm sorry Supervisor Rodifer. And part of that meeting, we approved $50,000 for charging stations and electric vehicle equipment from existing funding sources. I was a judge for 4-H Presentation Day, which was amazing. I learned about how to rescue kittens and roller skating and why it's a good thing. So, really wonderful kids. It's a great program for kids to learn public speaking skills and organization and how to do a report. So, someday, they'll be taking all of our jobs up here. I met with some of the residents of Cedar Ridge and neighboring areas discussing the work going on in Q and Mill. I drove Mount Elizabeth Drive, which is why my truck is so muddy, and I drove that road as well as Old Oak Ranch Road, which are the two pseudo-alternate ingress egress routes for that area. Old Oak Ranch is in fairly good condition, and Mount Elizabeth Drive is not very good. I wouldn't say you need four-wheel drive, but you need a fair amount of clearance to get over that road. So, but they are both passable at the moment, and that's my report.
Okay. Supervisor Gray?
I just want to remind Supervisor Campbell where he was yesterday also. We were able to observe the PG&E drone, and it was quite interesting. But, what's most interesting is the number of pieces of equipment that PG&E has to review or they plan on reviewing for fire safety, and I think they put out a figure of about 670,000 pieces of equipment in poles, transformers in California, and that's a real daunting task. But their process is very thorough. It's quite interesting. It's not a fast process on looking at those towers, but the drone takes about 150 pictures of a tower, and then it goes into a database, and it's sent to the engineering firm for PG&E in San Ramon, and they decipher whether there's a safety issue or not. But it's pretty interesting. That's my report because my calendar is on my computer and it's in my office, and I don't remember where I was last week most of the time.
Okay. Supervisor Kirk?
I went to some meetings with Ryan, as you stated. Also, First Five Commission where we started the process of deciding who we were going to grant some of the monies to. Also, the Natural Resources Committee, Sherry and I, and she'll probably touch on this maybe, but we have some clarification of parts of the grant. I got, or I had a constituent reach out to me who's interested in the energy portion of that grant, so I'm getting him in touch with the NDRC grant. What's his name? Elliot. I got him in touch with Elliot. Let's see. Went to Milwaukee Sugar Pine Fire Meeting last week, and some good things that I heard. Their volunteers are up. They're having Volunteer Academy going right now, so that's good. I think they're going to be at full staff this fire season, so that's good. Did the fire meeting last night, as we discussed earlier, and I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. So, Supervisor Brennan, you gave us a teaser earlier by showing us your packet.
It's been a really busy couple of weeks. So, I'm going to start off with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board Meeting on March 5th, 6th, and 7th, and I'll say that we appropriated $26 million in grants at that board meeting. We had one that came to this county, to the U.S. Forest Service, but it's really evident that with those grant funds that they are, we have been directed to look strategically at how these field reduction projects are working. There's going to be another round of grants in June, and the awards will be made in September. A lot of these are different pots of bond money, and I know that organizations in Tuolumne County are actively working on how we're going to get more of those dollars, but it's really about how we are strategically working all of these issues to one place. The interesting piece for this group is they did fund some of the SEQA and NEPA analysis, which historically has not been done, and it's to increase the recognition that we have to increase pace and scale. And so, that was a nice change. On March 8th, I did the ATCA meeting with Supervisor Rodifer, and I believe he'll probably talk about that. March 12th, the Natural Resource Committee Meeting, we had a presentation from NDRC, and had a very good conversation about the individual pillars, and there's a lot of confidence that actually the forestry pillar is moving along. They are now have contracts that have been let. Work will be starting, and I think that's significant. Where we really are still hung up is on the third pillar, the biomass piece. And we were very clear, we being the Natural Resource Committee, that we're looking for some targeted targets, that we have to hit some timelines because we still continue, I think, a number of individuals in our community. This board has expressed it, and we had a lengthy conversation there about what happens if we don't meet those timelines, and we need time to be looking at alternatives. And so, we are going to give the BEC Group, Elliot, they're going to come back in June, and they are going to be reporting to us regularly on meeting those targets. And we were very clear that, as a committee, we would be pushing this conversation to the board and reaching out to our federal legislators as needed because there's no longer a margin for error in this timeline. There really hasn't been all along, but now it's amplified. And so, I think they took that message loud and clear, and they made some very strong commitments about reporting back to us and being very specific on the goals and thresholds that they meet. Let's see. On the 12th, on the 13th, I was at the RCRC Board of Directors Meeting, and to say that we have a legislature that is...
Overzealous?
Yeah.
Prolific?
Prolific is a good word for it because I'm not going to hesitate to say I'm prolific at what, because a lot of people have a lot of very colorful adjectives for what's in here. But, we have stuff on cannabis, SEQA, ESA, energy, water solid waste, housing, healthcare, forestry, telecommunications, transportation, forestry. Those are just a few. We talked about the water piece this morning. I had copious notes. The really positive piece for me is I've already reached out to a number of our department heads on these issues that were raised, and they were all engaged already. And we have amazing staff. We have amazing staff, and we are so lucky for that. But, there are two pieces that I just wanted to call out specifically because they are pieces that this board has addressed on numerous occasions, and we will be watching real closely and providing input when necessary. First is AB 394, which exempts the California Environmental Quality Projects or Activities Recommended by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection that improve the fire safety of an existing subdivision if certain conditions are met, requires a lead agency to hold a notice public meeting to hear and respond to public comments before determining that a project or activity is exempt. I will tell you that we have had so many projects, both at the 108 Fire Safe Council and with other groups that are working this, that have been held up with SEQA, predominantly some of the specialist pieces, and this is an attempt to not circumvent the work, but find other ways to get the work done and move through the process. I would say, much like we've done with YSS, and we're not circumventing any of the environmental monitoring that has to be done or getting out and doing the analysis, but it's finding other resources to actually get out there and do it. The state archaeologists would be one example. They're really, they're having trouble getting it through that shop, and there are other qualified archaeologists that can do that work. The other piece is AB 343, which is on forestry, and it requires the Natural Resource Agency to develop and implement a fuels transportation program that provides competitive grants or other financial incentives for projects in eligible communities to offset the cost of transporting fuels to a biomass energy facility. Authorizes the agency to allocate monies from the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund consistent with the purposes of the fund. This is huge for us, and this is something that we have been advocating for my entire time on this board. And so, there are some good things in here, too, and we're certainly going to be abreast of those things that are good for the county and then those things that will be problematic. Lastly, I would say, give a shout out to staff again. I attended the Cattlemen's Spring Tour Dinner Meeting with my husband, and want to thank, some of our departments were there, sharing with the Cattlemans, the Sheriff's Department, Animal Control, and it was nice that they were there participating, and just want to thank them.
Could I just add one thing? Because Supervisor Brennan, she was there, and she didn't mention it, is the Two Care Dinner.
Oh, yes. Please do.
It, I think Sean Cook from the Farm Bureau did an excellent job in his presentation and pointed out some of the things that we are working on that were in sync with what the Farm Bureau is doing. So, a good organization and really, really had a nice event there.
Yeah. And so, I've been to that dinner. Unfortunately, I was not available to go this year, but that is a great event. If you've never been, recommend you buy a ticket next year and go. So, my report, I did attend ATCA with Supervisor Brennan, the board meeting. It was a special meeting principally to interview and possibly hire a new executive director. We did the interviews. We deferred a final decision until our next meeting. We basically ran out of time, and some key people that participated in the interviews were needing to leave, so we didn't have time to actually have the discussion, and we'll pick that up at our next meeting. About a week and a half ago, I attended the Arts Alliance Annual InFocus Photography Exhibit, and I guess you could call it a contest. They gave out awards at Columbia in the hall there. That was a wonderful event, as it always is. Highly recommend it. I did attend the TCTC, TCTA meeting that's already been talked about, and then I also attended the Economic Development Authority Meeting where we got briefed on the dissolution, the progress of the dissolution effort by our staff. And I can tell you that it's all proceeding as smoothly, I think, as it can. It's not going to be a, you know, a few-week process. It's going to be a few months, so, but it was a good meeting. And with that, that's the end of my report, and what we will do is, we will recess the open session and go back into closed session. And we've got about 20 minutes for the board members, so if you want to do reading, or you want to take a nap, or you want to take a break, whatever you want, but I'm going to ask you to be back in closed session no later than 4:0, yeah, 2:40, okay, so that we can start the interviews on time. Thanks.